We should be live on Facebook. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the City Council for April 5th, 2021. Just a reminder that we still are in Ordinance 1000 protocol, which allows for hybrid City Council meetings. I have all council members present in person with Councilmember Ken Saunders attending via Zoom. I can see him here. With that, invocation and Pledge of Legions. I've asked Councilmember Gardner if he would lead us in there.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this day, Lord, and for the changing of the seasons that we get to enjoy so much, Father. We're thankful for the time that we get to enjoy this beautiful weather. Thank you so much for this great city of Maumell that we get to live in, Lord, and we take our responsibility as elected officials for this town seriously, Father, to weigh the things that the residents want us to do to better this community, Father, and we take this with great responsibility. And so we ask for wisdom in all that we do, that we can make the decisions that will benefit this community, Father. Thank you so much for all of the city employees that take care of our great city and our first responders who take care of us, especially in our times of need, Lord. We just ask for special protection on all of them as they continue to serve us daily. Thank you so much for your son and his resurrection that we got to celebrate this weekend, Father, and it's through his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding. Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. With that, we will move on to special guests and announcements. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the Mayor's Employee of the Month for August. Slowly but surely, we're catching up, and that would be Mr. Pat Brown. Come on down. Hopefully, they told you a little bit about what was going to go on here. But I have a proclamation that I wanted to read for you. This is a proclamation naming Pat Brown as the Mayor's Employee of the Month for August 2020 and declaring April 6th, 2021 as Pat Brown Day in the city of Maumell. Whereas Pat Brown has been an exemplary employee of the Maumell Parks and Recreation Department since he started with the department back in 2013. Whereas Mr. Brown ensures excellence in the care and maintenance of many city facilities, including responsibility for the baseball complex, softball complex, and the Park on the River Event Center. Whereas Mr. Brown takes pride in his work to make sure all the facilities are ready for use each day and plans ahead for weekend usage. He makes himself available all hours of the day and night to take care of the problems that may arise at any of these facilities. And whereas Mr. Brown has shown true dedication toward his work, making him an invaluable asset to the Maumell Parks and Recreation Department and the city of Maumell. Now, therefore, I, Caleb Norris, Mayor of Maumell, on this fifth day of April, hereby declare Pat Brown to be the Mayor's Employee of the Month for August 2020 and hereby proclaim April 6th, that's tomorrow, as Pat Brown Day in the city of Maumell. And I see your supervisors. Make sure they know tomorrow is your day, all right? Okay, good, good. Pat is one of the unsung heroes. I guess we're now singing his praises a little bit over at Parks and Rec, and he's pretty forgetful when it comes to setting a lineup for fantasy football. I happen to know that, so. I always enjoyed the weeks where I played against him. With that, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of the March 15th regular meeting. Y'all should have received a copy of that in your council packet. At this time, I'd entertain a motion to approve. I've got a motion second. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please speak into your mic and say yes.
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 Thank you. Just a reminder, we put the mics up if you wouldn't mind pulling them down when it comes time to vote, so that everyone at home and watching the recording can also hear you. We will move on to public comment cards. We have a number of them. I believe they are all on... All right, they're all on agenda items, so we will address those when we get to... When we get to that particular ordinance. So with that, for department reports, I've asked Ms. Judy Keller to give us an update on what's going on in community and economic development.
Can I take this out?
Certainly.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you tonight. I'm going to keep my comments brief, since you have quite a heavy agenda, but I would like to remind you that I welcome the opportunity for you to meet with me individually in my office or give me a call if you have any questions or you just want to brainstorm over something. So please do that. I'm going to read some of this, because I think it'll go faster than me just talking. So, "In the past year, relationships and communications have been a critical element, personally and at work. The relationships we have formed with our industries and businesses have been extremely helpful as we navigate through the current situation. We haven't been able to meet in person with our businesses and have our quarterly industrial luncheons. However, we try to stay in touch by whatever means possible. There's much information concerning health guidelines and mandates, unemployment benefits, and funding opportunities to filter through, and we have attempted to help our businesses navigate through that information and keep them informed. At the very beginning of the pandemic, some of the businesses were worried that the governor might shut down businesses, and some of them were deemed essential businesses. So we gathered letters from them, from their corporate offices, and we submitted that to AEDC, just in case the governor did close businesses. But fortunately, that didn't happen, and they were all able to continue. Recently, one of the industries was trying to get set up for vaccines, and they were saying they weren't an essential business, but we still had the letter that deemed them an essential business, so that helped them get onboard with vaccine. When the first round of opening opened up, we tried... The first round of funding opened up, we tried to provide the information to as many businesses as possible, and close to 50 businesses in Maumell received some of that first funding that was issued, and it amounted to over $700,000. So that was wonderful. In speaking about the vaccines, Brandon Aker has been amazing. He gave me his personal cell phone number and contact information for the businesses and the industries, and he has even done some online vaccination clinics for them at their plant. So I just can't say enough good things about him and his team, and we really appreciate them. And recently, I saw that Dillards was having a job fair, and so we contacted them, got the information, and Joseph put it on Facebook. They had 305 shares, and they're having another one this Wednesday from 3:00 to 6:00, if anybody's interested, and you can apply online. So... But you can go to the facility between 3:00 and 6:00 Wednesday. And as you already know, Kimberly Clark finished their 68,000-square-foot expansion at the end of last year. We haven't been able to tour it yet, but we're hoping to be able to do that soon. It's fully functional now. Collaboration has never been better among city departments. Per direction from the mayor, the Planning and Permits Department, the Fire Department, and the Community and Economic Development Department have put together a document providing guidance to those wanting to do business here to make it more streamlined. The info can be found on the website. However, we still fine-tuning it. City departments are having ongoing discussions about land use, zoning, walk trails, the wetlands, in general, the future of Maumell. All these departments have joint meetings with individuals who want to open a business here, as well as those who represent current landowners. The pandemic advanced online shopping by nearly 10 years, and some companies have found that working from home works well and at a lower cost. Some may never return to the former way of doing business. As a city, we have to plan for the new way of shopping and conducting business. The landscape has changed, and we, as a city, have to adjust to those changes. All the city's departments are collaborating to do that. The future is bright, and we are excited to see Maumell grow. We are also having discussions with the Arkansas Economic Development Commission on ways to improve Maumell's competitiveness. Hopefully, we'll have more to share with you in the near future. We've also begun conversations with Entergy's Tandy White, who is the Community Development Manager for this area and a Maumell resident. We look forward to her insight as a resident and as a community developer. The certified site was looked at seriously by two prospects in the past nine months. Unfortunately, neither project selected the Maumell site. The feedback from one of the prospects, as well as economic development experts, is that the cost of clearing and the time to clear the land has a negative impact on this site. If there are three sites under consideration and the others are cleared and ready for development, then our site will likely be eliminated. But we're looking for ways to make our site more competitive. The Maumell Area Chamber of Commerce's annual golf tournament is already scheduled. It's scheduled for May the 14th at the Country Club of Arkansas. With events being canceled last year, the chamber has been challenged, just like others, to keep the doors open, but the board has worked hard and is making progress. If you haven't met the new office manager, please drop by and meet Theda McMahoney. She's really doing a great job to get things on track again. Metro Little Rock, Arkansas is... Metro Little Rock Alliance, sorry, is working with a new marketing group that is located in central Arkansas. I'm serving on a subcommittee that meets every other week with the company, and I should have some data to share with you soon on that. The fees we pay Metro Little Rock Alliance would not cover a full-page ad in a printed edition or a six-month digital banner, so I'm confident our dollars are being well spent. So I appreciate your support for that. We are working with a few small businesses to find locations that fit their business plan and their budget. It's a little bit of a struggle, but we keep trying, so hopefully we'll find something for them. And lastly, I want to invite you and the Planning Commission to a celebration tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 at Cypress Cold Storage at 11100 Lewis Nelson Drive. You will recall that last year you passed a tax-back resolution as part of an AEDC incentive packet for a $13 million expansion. In spite of the pandemic, the expansion is completed, and the number of jobs created is nearly double what was projected. In addition to the City Council and the Planning Commission, nearly every department in the city has played a role in the successful completion of this expansion. Mayor Norris will be speaking, as well as Secretary of Commerce Mike Preston, and we hope you'll be able to join us. So 1:30 tomorrow afternoon, Lewis Nelson Drive. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I know that was really fast, but I know, like I said, you have a pretty lengthy agenda.
Councilmember Mosley?
We have... You mentioned that one site was not cleared, and that was kind of a problem for somebody that was looking at it.
Yes.
Was that industrial or commercial?
Yeah, no, it's industrial. It's the certified site, the 120... 119-acre site at the end of Champs Boulevard.
Okay, there's a big old area that's vacant there, so I assume that's where that is.
Well, it's still... It's not cleared.
Okay.
So recently, the reason I was given was that the cost to clear it and get it ready to build on was just too much for the people that were looking at doing it, so they backed out of the deal.
Okay. And the brown property is a big commercial area down there that's available, I guess?
That's near Interstate 40.
Near Interstate 40. That looks to be about the biggest commercial availability we've got.
I think about 88 acres of that is developable. The rest is wetlands.
Okay, all right.
But it's a much larger tract than 88 acres.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Okay, I hope to see you all there tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Keller. All right, we'll move on to procedural motion. I'd entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only. I've got a motion. Do I hear a second? And a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed, please say no. Motion carries. The next order of business, and moving on to unfinished business, is the third reading of Ordinance 1022, amending Chapter 10 of the Maumell City Code. Madam City Court Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
Be it enacted at ordinance of the City Council of the city of Maumell, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 1022, an ordinance amending Chapter 10 of the City... The Maumell City Code to revise enforcement procedures, eliminate the category of potentially dangerous animal and hazardous animal, to change the current definition of dangerous animal, to remove the ban on certain breeds of dogs, and for other purposes.
All right, we do have public comment cards and emails. What I think we'll do to give Mrs. Timmons a little bit of a break is maybe alternate between emails that we have received and public comment cards. Just a reminder, as long as we're operating in Ordinance 1000, which is the hybrid City Council meetings, we allow those individuals who don't necessarily feel safe coming to the council meeting to submit a written comments, provided a few conditions are met. You can check out those requirements on the website or just by contacting the clerk's office. So with that, the first email, if you wouldn't mind.
Before I read the first public comment, I do want to state that if you send me a comment via email and do not include your home address, your physical address, according to Ordinance 1000, I am not allowed to read that as public comment. So if anyone's out there, or if you're watching, and I'm not reading your comment, that's the reason why. This first comment I'm going to read is on behalf of Matt Dyna, 111 Mohawk Drive, and also Ms. Patty Robinson. They both submitted identical comments, so I'm going to read it once on their behalf. "March 18th, 2021, a one-year-old baby girl was killed by a family pet, pocket bully, a designer pit bull hybrid breed. The baby got too close to the pet's food bowl. Two teenage uncles had to pry the dog... the dog off the baby's head. The dog had never been violent with people or animals before. It had been a pet in the home for four-plus years. March 16th of this year, a three-year-old boy was killed when a pair of pit bulls owned by a neighbor living on a street over escaped from their home and attacked the boy and his mother as they played in their fenced backyard. Their mother was critically injured. The boy suffered total evisceration injuries. February 10th, 2021, a four-week-old baby girl was attacked and killed by the family dog, an American bulldog, commonly known as a bull breed. The history of the dog revealed no prior known aggressive behavior. Of course, I have not highlighted the horrendous injuries suffered recently by many other children, adults, or pets, but you play the odds, there will be more injuries and deaths of American children before the next scheduled City Council meeting. So I have to ask, why is the mayor and the City Council even considering lifting the pit bull and bull breed in our community? Do you honestly believe it won't happen here? It could happen to your children, your grandchildren, or others in your family, honestly. I bet the families of the one-year-old girl and the four-week-old infant thought their bully pet would never do that. They were wrong. Keep the bull breed banned in place, or let us vote."
Thank you. The first public comment card is from Mr. Robert Strahan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm not here to talk about that issue, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. What issue were you here for?
For your request, I sent this to you.
Okay. That's not on the comment card. Okay.
That's my... That's my mistake.
Okay, Mr. Strahan, what I'll do is after this particular agenda item, we'll allow your public comment card. I'm sorry, I would have called you up at the earlier point. Thank you. We'll move on to Ms. Leslie Rush. If you could please state your name, address, and you have three minutes.
Let me know if you can't hear me, okay? I'm Leslie Rush, and I live on Sierra Valley Loop in Maumell Valley Estates. I just want to say hello again, and I'm glad we are here tonight for this final decision. For canine regulation and public safety, it is important to understand the difference between two major forms of regulation that you will be voting on tonight. There's breed-specific legislation, and there's breed-neutral legislation. Breed-specific legislation is limited to single-factor, appearance-based approach that has proven to be ineffective and opposed by top organizations that we discussed this last council meeting, also on your handout that we had. For public safety, our current dated ordinance imposes regulations on the minority of dogs based on their appearance or assumed breed, regardless of the dog's behavior or responsible ownership. Breed-neutral legislation is Ordinance 1022. It's well-written. In a comprehensive, multifactorial, behavioral-based approach, breed-neutral regulation in Ordinance 1022 addresses all potentially dangerous dogs, all irresponsible owners, all unsafe dog-related situations, regardless of the dog's appearance or suspected breed. Although the CDC states that you have more of a chance of perishing from a lightning strike than a dog, multiple peer-reviewed studies on dog bite-related fatalities conclude the comprehensive, breed-neutral approaches, as in Ordinance 1022, are the most effective tool for reducing and preventing serious dog bite-related incidents. Thank you, council members, for the ones that have taken the time to research. We really do appreciate you. Thank you, council members, for the ones that have truly listened to those of us that have years upon years upon years in the trenches and the experience with these breeds and the breeds that are currently banned. We encourage council members to vote yes for Ordinance 1022 for the love of all dogs, fiscal responsibility, effective enforcement for animal control, and increased public safety. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rush. Madam City Court, do you have another...
This next public comment I'll be reading is on behalf of Catherine Miller at 200 Millwood Circle here in Maumell. Dear City Council member, I ask that you please repeal the archaic ban against dogs labeled as pit bulls. Scientific studies, veterinarian canine, and public safety experts agree the BSL and the breed-based bans are ineffective and a waste of public resources. Even worse, they are discriminatory towards responsible owners and punish dogs based only on their appearance or assumed breed, sometimes resulting in the seizure of loved pets that have done nothing wrong. Furthermore, repealing the ban will improve public safety, because it will allow animal control and public safety officials to focus more on relevant breed-neutral factors that directly and scientifically link to dog fighting-related incidents... I'm sorry. On more relevant breed-neutral factors that are directly and scientifically linked to dog bite-related incidents, such as irresponsible owners, aggressive dogs of any breed, and problems related to abuse or neglect. Breed prejudice, as policy doesn't create desired safety outcomes. I oppose BSL because it is ineffective and based on faulty science. Please repeal BSL in Maumell.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next public comment card from Veronica Palmer. If you could please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Veronica Palmer, and I live on Pleasant Wood Drive. As a 22-year resident of Maumell, my family has always owned a dog. Every time we walk our dog, we witness multiple others at large. My daughter spoke with you when this ordinance was introduced. Her research shows that breed-specific legislation, or BSL, imparts a false sense of security and does not address the social issue of irresponsible pet ownership. The fact of the matter is that bad behavior exhibited by careless owners is easier to justify if you have a false sense of security, thinking that banning a few specific breeds means that there are no dangerous animals in Maumell. We know firsthand that this is not true. While she was researching BSL legislation, our own dog was attacked, and the owners later had to surrender the dog. This did not lessen her drive to uncover facts about BSL. The research comes from reputable sources, including the American Veterinary Medical Association, the Humane Society, and the AKC. Her research uncovered that breed misidentification is common, making BSL extremely ineffective. I would like to address a couple of misstatements. It has been stated that special interest groups are running this campaign. I know this to be untrue. My own daughter took an interest when researching Gold Award topics, and her love of dogs led her to learn more. She reached out to people in Maumell doing the day-to-day work caring for animals, and they are at the heart of this campaign, because they have taken the time to research facts and not give into fear. A second misstatement I would like to address is if they'd given the chance to vote, 70% of Maumell residents would oppose lifting BSL. People who are against something tend to be more vocal. An informal poll next door asked a simple question. Should pit bulls be allowed in Maumell? 247 residents voted, and 55% said yes. The time for confusion and delay is over. We, the residents of Maumell, have evolved. In the three decades since BSL was implemented, public sentiment has changed. We voted for you to represent us, and this is the time to act. I want to address my own word-two representatives. You both had a hand in crafting this legislation, and I urge you to vote tonight to pass it as written and resist delay tactics, such as splitting the ordinance or spending tens of thousands of taxpayer dollars to send this to the voters instead of casting a hard vote and doing the right thing. I implore every single council member to put facts over fear. Vote tonight to implement Ordinance 1022. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have additional public comment cards, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, the next one I'll be reading is from Shane Pennington of 125 Lilly Drive. "I have a few statements to make in regards to Ordinance 1022. If any of our council members wouldn't mind addressing during their comments, I would appreciate it. Number one, in 2019, a vote was taken, and the repeal of the pit bull ban failed. The vote was done within the confines of our elected officials, our city councils, you. Why did the council feel confident in their ability to make a decision then, but now some of those same members are pushing for a ballot vote? Why did the people holding up signs saying 'let the people vote' not feel the need to vote then? I am confident in you as our city council. You should vote on these issues tonight. Second, in the last reading, Mr. Holt made a comment. He said it isn't a dog problem, it's a people problem. Mr. Holt, you are exactly right, and that's what this ordinance is all about. Repeal the ban on specific dog breed, pit bull, and strengthen the accountability on the owners, the people. You said it correctly. Now please vote that way. I've heard comments... Number three, I've heard comments about there being no recorded pit bull dog bites in Maumell. I think one council member has already stated that he knows of several pit bulls or pit bull mixes in our city. I think we all know that to be true, so what does that say about pit or pit mix owners? Maybe they are more responsible than they've been given credit. Pit bulls have been here and are here, but they aren't biting or attacking. Thank you all for serving our city, Mr. Pennington."
Thank you. Back to public comment cards. Jonathan Crafton. For yours, name and address, please, and you have three minutes, sir.
Yes, my name is Jonathan Crafton. That's J-O-N-A-T-H-A-N. Last name Crafton, C-R-A-F-T-O-N. My address is 4 Parr Circle, Little Rock, Arkansas, 72209. "Prior readings regarding Ordinance 1022 have invoked hyperbolic propaganda, public outcry, and attempted a character assassination. This has steered the ordinance conversation away from a departmental change regarding public safety and our ability to enforce to that of a loaded conversation full of vitriol and condemnation for the city. Animal control is employed to ensure the protection of residents' animals and to..." and to this end, an update, up-to-date animal control is required. I have not found revisions regarding 1022 or the classification of dangerous or vicious animals since 607 in 2006, 15 years ago. Prior to that, sections regarding classifications were in 1993, 13 years prior. With the introduction of such heavy restrictions, the exclusion of specific breeds is superfluous and would hinder the enforcement of other dangerous animals. If animal control is to spend time attempting to remove an animal because it has proven dangerous, they cannot justifiably spend as much time attempting to remove another animal breed simply because it has been not proven dangerous. Under 1022, the changes would affect all animals and can only be taken on a case-by-case basis. Those opposed to the changes of 1022 are therefore willing to trade the safety of many more citizens on the grounds of baseless speculation and personal reasons. Additionally, 1022 must also not be split into multiple parts and must be accepted in its entirety today. It must not be delayed for a future date or put to a future ballot. The longer before its resolution, the more the public is at danger of outdated procedures, and the longer animal control goes without being able to properly protect the public. If the ordinance fails to pass and the city codes are not updated, animal control will need immediate training through organizations such as NACA, the North American Animal Control Association, and ASCA, Arkansas State Animal Control Association, to make up for obsolete codes, that, and/or increase their wages to complement the special attention given to special cases. Ordinance 1022 seeks to protect the public by standardizing the methods of which the public is protected from dangerous animals. Taken on a case-by-case basis, animal owners can comply or force animal removal from the city, no matter the genus, species, or breed. If those owners do not like getting rid of their animals or if the current citizens do not agree with the changes should 1022 pass, they are free to leave the city as well. This is a matter of public safety and should be free of personal biases, feelings, and preconceived notions. All canines are beautiful. All cats are beautiful. All animals are full under this ordinance, so all animals should be treated individually. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam City Clerk, do we have additional emails?
Yes, sir. The next comment I'll be reading on behalf of Ms. Lauren Elliott. My name is Lauren Elliott. I am currently serving as an elected alderman on the Monmel Youth Council as an 18-year resident, and I'm heavily involved in community events. Through this, I've learned a lot about government operations. I'm a newly registered voter who will be voting in my first election soon, and I believe in informed voting. I've researched breed bans as well as how to best control vicious animals through city code. Reputable sources agree that breed-neutral ordinances are most effective. I feel as if the city would be best served by approving the amended ordinance, and I am respectfully asking you to vote in support of this amended Ordinance 1022 as written.
Thank you. And back to my last public comment card on this issue, April Thomas. Come on down. You know the rules. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm April Thomas. I live at 29 Bell River Circle. I'm in Ward One. This ordinance is about safety. Unfortunately, there's been a group of people that took everything within this proposed ordinance and decided to make it about four breeds. Four out of more than 200 possibilities, four that are easily mistaken for over 20 other breeds, and thousands of others that are mixed breeds that are often mistaken for those four. How do you tell the difference? Also, unfortunately, these same people have been misguided by believing a paid-for propaganda site catered to making up their own statistics in order to mislead and meet their own agenda of eradication. Dog bites are a people problem. Everything wrong in this world has been a people problem. So Monmel Animal Services needs to treat all dogs equally and not waste the manpower or the city funds in trying to regulate those four breeds or their doppelgangers and let Monmel Animal Services focus on the people. That is what this ordinance is for. There are many other dogs out there that are bigger and even more dangerous than these four breeds, and I'm not worried about them, none of them. I'm more worried about the owners of all dogs and the lack of their responsibility. Responsibility would have kept that one-year-old child from being bitten while the dog was eating out of its own food bowl. Responsibility would have kept that boy from being killed, knowing that those dogs had a history of attack responsibility. And attacks have already happened here in Monmel. They have been by German Shepherd, Raccoon, Marta Poo's, Cats, Dachshunds, Rat Terriers, Great Danes, Corgis, Golden Retrievers. These are the attacks that you have going on in Monmel just this last year. They're already happening here in Monmel, and none of them are holy breeds. So let's not punish the breeds or their doppelgangers, and let's make people responsible by passing 1022 and letting Monmel Animal Services do their job and protect our communities the way it should be. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, Madam City Clerk, do you have more emails?
I do. The next comment I'll be reading is on behalf of Karen Kirsten at 113 Lilly Drive. I support 1022 because I support dogs being treated based on their behavior, not on their looks or breed Monmel currently. Has a false sense of security because of the bad dogs. The pitties and the pitty mixes are banned. I spoke to a friend who rescued a lovable big sweet dog named Peaches, and she did a DNA test, and it is 18% petty. I told her, under our current ordinance, she cannot bring her dog with her to my house when she visits, and we can't take the dogs to the park, et cetera. She had considered moving here before she adopted Peaches as she worked in North Little Rock, but now she's waiting until hopefully the ordinance passes. There are Dobermans, Mastiffs, German Shepherds, Boxers, Coon Hounds, Great Danes, Great Pyrenees, Pom Dachshunds, and yes, even Labs and Poodles, and countless mixes that can be dangerous dogs. And they all are allowed in our city, no matter their behavior, but a dog that looks like a pitty or has been tested as a pitty is banned no matter the temperament or gentleness of the dog. I also feel that 1022 strengthens the responsibility of Monmel Animal Services and allows them to better able handle the dog population to protect the citizens. I hope the council votes tonight, as there are a lot of controversial chatter on social media, and I'm seeing neighbor against neighbor and friend against family, family against friend. It has become ugly at times, and it's sad to see our city so divided. The council has a huge responsibility. I don't envy any of you. It's time to put this to a vote, and I'm stopping due to the 300-word limit. My last public comment that I received from a Mr. Dustin Hartung of 107 Lake Valley Drive. Thank you, esteemed council, for considering the changes with proposed Ordinance 1022. As a Monmel citizen, I implore you for your affirmative vote to pass this ordinance and create an inclusive Monmel community for all people and dogs. While the original BSL was most likely created with good intentions, it ultimately punishes responsible dog owners, discriminates and excludes potential Monmel citizens, and does very little to punish irresponsible owners or prevent dog bites. As an upstanding, forward-thinking community, we need to set an example for others by opening our arms to all dog breeds to show that we won't succumb to fear tactics, bullying, discrimination, or draconian policies that hamper our responsible citizens in an attempt to target a few. Monmel has maintained such a good fight to population ratio, not because of the BSL in place or the breeds of dogs in question, but due to the types of responsible individuals living in our community. This will continue with the passing of Ordinance 1022. In addition, our animal control officers will have a clearer definitions and more power to act sooner to properly classify potentially dangerous animals on their actions instead of their looks, DNA. They'll save dogs from harsh conditions and punish those who prove to be irresponsible owners. As a lifelong responsible dog owner, I know full well that any dog is capable of anything from being a loving family pet or a scared vicious animal. The key difference between the environment they are raised in, the care they receive, and the training they go through. It is our job to push the knowledge of responsibility to Monmel citizens and ensure quality for individuals and dogs alike. An affirmative vote today will move Monmel in the right direction.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. That concludes public comments. Councilmember Gardner?
Motion to approve Ordinance 1022.
I've got a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 1022. I'm assuming there's going to be some discussion. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, this has been a, this has been a very divisive issue. It's probably an issue that should never, never have been brought up. I've learned, I've been an alderman for eight years, and I've learned that if something is working, you don't have a problem. Sometimes it's best not to tinker with it. Because, you know, we've had, there's, there's a lot of people that are mad about this. In fact, I haven't seen this kind of division and ill will toward people since we changed the form of government back in 2001. So, so basically, I'm really sorry that we even brought this up, that somebody would, would bring this up. It's alienated at least half, half the residents. No matter who wins this, the other half's going to be mad and stay mad. Our city's always been kind of a step above on safety and things like that, and I just hate to see us move away from that. I was hoping, I thought we had an agreement at the last meeting that we were going to have a referendum. I've gotten a memo here from Doug Shin that it looks like he's not going to go ahead and proceed with that. Is that correct?
That's true. We're not going to proceed with it.
Okay.
He's like, I'll read my statement.
You don't need to read it.
Oh, I think I might.
Well, go ahead.
No, you're talking now. I'll take it after you.
All right. I spoke with the city attorney because I didn't see where that was on the agenda, and I understand that it was all broken apart, and I actually thought about going ahead and introducing that myself tonight. I, I did finally decide that I don't introduce things that I wasn't involved in developing nor, or have read. So I don't even know really what it says. So I will, I will go ahead and make a motion that will, to go to a referendum, the same motion I made last time. I think we need to have it on the record, who's, who's for a referendum and who's not. I hereby make a motion to take this ordinance to a referendum by the people in the primary election currently scheduled for May 2022 and request that the city attorney guide us through the process to accomplish this. That's my motion.
Do I hear a second? I've got a motion. I started to write down the terminology of that.
It was the same as last, last time.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Holt, your button is already pushed, so I don't know if you were just in line for that or you wanted to make a comment on this issue. Pardon me?
In line for comment.
Okay. If there is no further discussion?
No, I do have a comment, yes.
Okay. Councilmember Holt?
Let me explain why I was tardy at the meeting. I just pulled away from my house up the street, and I had my phone in my pocket, and the phone rang. So I desperately tried to unfasten my seatbelt and get my phone out. It was a number, a private number. A very soft-spoken lady spoke to me and took a little bit, and as was talking, she had, was telling me that she hoped that I would not let the ordinance pass tonight. And so I, as I began to talk, she said, told me about two years ago, her grandson, it was not here in Monmel, but she does live here in Monmel, was playing out in the front yard, and it was her, her grandson, and another child or two was out there with her. And all of a sudden, this pit bull had gotten out of the yard, and the people obviously didn't know that he was out. And the dog ran down the street and attacked the son, the, the child. The child has 52 stitches in her face. Fifty-two. The child is a nervous wreck. He's six years old now. She said that the people had said that the dog had not, had caused no problem at all before, nothing. He was a sweet, darling child, our dog. And, and now he runs down the street, and for no reason at all, he chose the smallest of the children, not the largest. As I got that far, then I started on my truck, and I went on down, and finally I said, let me pull over again. And so I stopped again, and I said, do you mind if I have your address? So I wasn't sure she would let me have it since her phone was a private number. And so she gave me her address, where she lives here in Monmel. And so I thought, well, how is the child doing? She said, well, you know, he's, he's, he's okay, but, you know, is, is traumatically involved. And, and, you know, it was the next-door neighbor's dog, and then it was just, it just out of the clear blue sky. My heart, absolutely, so, you know, got started again, and I didn't realize that I got outside. It was already 6 o'clock. So I apologize for my tardiness, Mr. Mayor, but that's why I was tardy. I pulled over twice to talk to this lady about her dog. I didn't make this up. God forbid I cannot have something like this on my conscience. Which of us have children that you were willing to put your children out there to have a dog get out of the fence and have the dog chew them up? I, it, they, when they attack, they don't just bite. You know better than that. Have, God have mercy on our souls, ladies and gentlemen. I cannot have this on my conscience, and I will, I will vote no until the day I die. I, Mr. Mayor, this is no simple problem. And what I don't understand is the people that are fired have nothing to say. We're the council members. If you believe in this, tell us what this is doing for, for our community, for our community. I don't understand it at all, and I, I have not heard one single thing. We're defending the dogs. It's my job to defend the people who elected me to, as the lady said while ago, we are here to support them, and we had to have facts over fear. I mean, and I assure you, this is facts. This is not just fear. She just happened to call me and tell me what happened. And, and the other person that said that, that quoted me that it is a people problem, not a dog problem, that's for true. I can keep the dog behind the fence. I can't keep the people behind the fence. I, I, I simply cannot talk about this without tears in my eyes. It breaks my heart that this type thing would happen. I do have on my phone the pictures of my neighbor who, while was jogging, witnessed a, a, a dog attacked by a massive dog that was so big that the owner couldn't control the dog, and he chewed the entire side out of this dog, and they had to go rush him to the emergency room and, and, and take care of him, and it wasn't a pit bull. I mean, I admit, you know, sure, other dogs do attack other people and other dogs. But that doesn't mean we need to bring in one more so they can get equal opportunity. I don't believe in that at all. So that's my point, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mr. Holt. Just a reminder, the motion on the floor and the motion being discussed right now is Councilmember's most, Councilmember Mosley's motion to have a referendum in 2022 and have the city attorney facilitate or help with that. I noticed Councilmember Shin's light is back on, and Councilmember Mosley's light is back on. Are those general comments or comments related to the motion being debated? Whichever you, if you, would you like to go now or later? Okay, thank you. Mr. Mosley, is your light on for?
Yeah, I, I did a, my Ward Four alderman over there just spoke. I appreciate your comments there. Again, a referendum would settle this thing once and for all. If, if you all just go ahead and pass this, we don't know exactly how many people are really for this. I suspect it's a very small percentage of our population that want to lift this ban. It won't be settled if we don't do a referendum. If we do a referendum, we know what the people say, and we'll go ahead and abide by it. And if, if somebody, if you go ahead and vote this through and somebody gets hurt, some little kid gets killed, it's, it's, you're going to be blamed. and somebody gets hurt, some little kid gets killed, it's, it's, you're going to be blamed. I, 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 I didn't want to say that, but you will. And, uh, if, if we do a referendum and it says lift the ban, then you're just doing the will of the people. It's, what I've referred to in one meeting is a, a popular versus, uh, political. You all may have, have the votes here to do this tonight, but it's been a political solution, something that was recruited. People were recruited to do this. This is, this has been something that's been hard fought, and, and the people that wanted to lift the ban have spent a lot of time recruiting people, and it's, it's backed by some national organizations. And if, it won't be, uh, it won't be a pop or a victory. So, uh, again, I, I suggest, let's, let's do the referendum, and then we know what exactly our population thinks about this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Tierney, your comments on the referendum motion before the referendum?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Mosley suggested that, uh, we don't know what the, uh, people of the community would want to vote on this. I've been keeping a record of everybody who's emailed me on this. Now, some people, uh, people opposed, uh, are very strident in their opposition, and some people have emailed me dozens of times. Those only counted as one person, and I've kept a record of how many people have written me, and I've received emails from, it looks like about a hundred and ninety-six different individuals. Now, I separated out the people who are not in Maumell. Forty-two people in favor of the ordinance were not in Maumell. I separated them out. Twenty-one people against the ordinance were not in Maumell. I separated them out. That left a vote of one hundred people in favor, forty-three against the measure. So I'm, I'm seeing overwhelming support from everybody that I've talked to, uh, on the people who are against it. Actually, at one point, it was forty-four, and then, uh, one person, I was explaining to him some of the, uh, things that the new ordinance would do. He reversed his, uh, vote. He said, just vote your conscience. I didn't put him in the for category because he didn't say he supported it. He just said, do what you think is best. Uh, so I'm seeing, you know, a, a better than, uh, you know, two to one. I mean, it's, uh, you know, a hundred to forty-three, uh, in favor. So, I mean, it's not even a close thing from the feedback I've been getting, uh, from people in residence here in Maumell. I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion and a second, uh, to, um, postpone this to a referendum in twenty-two, uh, 2022. Does everyone understand the motion? Does anyone not understand the motion? All right, all those in favor of postponing this until 2022 and putting it on the ballot, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All opposed, play, say no?
No.
Mayor, can we do a roll call? I want it, I want it for sure on the record, how this came down.
Yes, Madam Roll Call Vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazoney?
No.
Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Shin?
No.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion fails. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 1022. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, Madam, um, City Clerk, uh, if you could please do a roll call vote on ordinance 1022.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes, and can I have that recorded on the minutes of our meeting? Have our vote recorded on the minutes of the meeting? I request that they be put on the minutes.
Yes, sir, we record the votes. Yes, sir. What's that?
Could you check with Mr. Holt, make sure he, he voted the way he wanted to?
Uh, he, he voted yes.
I, I, I meant to vote no for this. I voted no on the ordinance.
Do you want that recorded in the minutes?
And have it recorded that way in the minutes.
Thank you, sir.
For everyone.
Um, can I mention something? He voted no for the reference, the yes for the referendum, and now here's the vote.
Yeah. So let's, let's start over. There seems to be, uh, mistakes. So the, the motion on the floor is an ordinance, uh, is a motion to approve ordinance 1022. Madam City Clerk, if you could please do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Holt?
No.
Councilmember Shin?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazoney?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
No.
Councilmember Mosley?
Big no.
Ordinance 1022 passes five to three. Thank you. With that, uh, I wanted to really quickly just say something. I, I, I read an email that I wanted to share really briefly, uh, and it has been a little bit disheartening and frustrating. It's, listen, folks, it's been a long year, uh, with COVID, people on the, uh, you know, it's just been a long year with a lot of stuff. And, and I, I received an email that particularly, um, on, on this ordinance that really hit home to me. Uh, and I won't read the whole thing, and I won't read their, their name because they didn't ask for this to be read. But it says, "I've become physically ill over the division this proposal has brought to our kind-hearted city. It's awful seeing neighbors hating on neighbors. I'm ready to see social media posts discussing if food pantries need to be refilled instead of hateful posts." The email goes on and on and says, "All that logic set aside. Please just vote on this issue to put an end to it, uh, to put an end to this issue and all the hate I'm seeing. Pass or fail, I don't care. I cannot imagine this hate and aggression, neighbor to neighbor, continuing. I vote for love and peace among neighbors." Uh, and can you please put an end to that? And I just wanted to say, with this over with, hopefully, at least for a while, uh, we can get back to, uh, dealing with a whole lot of, uh, issues. I also really wanted to say, uh, that I think that, um, yeah, I'll save that. So anyways, uh, that concludes ordinance 1022. The motion is passed. Uh, I will call Mr. Strahan up. I apologize for not calling you earlier. I thought, uh, that your public comment card was on, uh, this issue. If you could please state your name and address for the record, sir, and you have three minutes.
My name is Robert Strahan. I live at 127 Ruby Valley Loop, and I am nervous. I sent the city a FOIA request, and that's what I'm going to talk to. I am here thankful to be a citizen of the United States where I have the right to question and hold accountable members of our government. On March 22nd, I sent to Maumell City a FOIA request. I respectfully requested a boatload of information related to ordinance 1023, including all emails, text messages, and a bunch more of that lawyer stuff. On March 23rd, I sent a Central Arkansas Water FOIA request, requesting basically the same information, and Central Arkansas Water takes FOIA requests extremely serious. I read from a FOIA email from the Central Arkansas's General Counsel to the COO and CEO of the water company. Mark Bingen, who is CAW's Realtor, longtime Maumell resident, and former chairman of the Maumell Planning Commission, has been a great advocate and doing a great job lobbying, lobbying the city council. He is upbeat about Monday's vote, and mayor is on our side in the event we need a tie break. After getting all the info from both the city and the Central Arkansas Water, I matched it together by elected official, and here's the results. I hope I pronounced your name right. Mr. Tierney, um, I wish you fell the same deal as the emails you got against the thing as you did with the dog deal. But, sir, you, I'm just going to say RJ, I'm not even going to try. Uh, Mr. Holt, Mr. Mosley, every single one of your emails you've delivered to me from the city and the emails from the water company and everything else matched perfectly. There was nothing deal. As for, uh, the mayor and Councilman Shin, there was one email that you had between the agent, uh, real estate agent or the lobbyist for the water company that you did not disclose. That, I, um, I have those emails if you'd like to see them after the meeting. As for Gardner, Williams, I find it troubling. There was many documents and emails between the water company agent and yourself that you didn't disclose. There was also, uh, an email, um, there was also attempts to get private email addresses from the city council members from the, uh, agent of the water company. I also have a document where the general counsel for the water company asked his agent slash lobbyist to find a key city council member to read into the record to head off legal action by the country club against the development. Um, I'm not an attorney. I don't know if that's good or bad or what the deal is. I do know that that councilman did not disclose that email in my FOIA request to the city. What became obvious is that the agent slash lobbyist for this water company continued to take his emails between y'all and text messages and forward them to the general counsel. That's the reason why the water company disclosed them to me. Uh, I am not an attorney, I'm not a judge, I'm not a jury. I'm going to look to the Arkansas Ethics Commission for guidance on how to handle this. Um, I want to thank you for your time and giving me the opportunity to talk, and I personally take offense to emails privately sent making fun of Maumell Country Club members, calling them too dumb to make of original thought of their own, and also referring to the mayor as an embarrassment and a total, and making fun of them. Don't worry, all they're going to care about is trash pickup next. I thank you for your time and the ability, and God bless America, that I can stay here and address you. If anybody has questions, all the information is in this file.
Thank you, sir. All right. The next item of business is the second reading of ordinance 1025, Amending, uh, Maumell Land Use Plan. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the city, by the city council of the city of Maumell, County of Alaska, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1025, and ordinance amending the Maumell Land Use Plan and map and for other purposes.
I have a, uh, public comment card from Mr. Roland Harris.
I'm fine.
You're fine? Okay. This is all in second reading. Is there any discussion on ordinance 1025? Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. I, is, uh, Department Head Grummer available? Could I ask him about the map that, uh, he put in the packet? I had, I had asked if you could identify commercial areas that are undeveloped at this point, just to get an idea of what, uh, where we are and, uh, how much, uh, how much should be necessary to try to hang on to some of the commercial, available commercial property for, uh, future sales tax? Uh, because if we pass this ordinance, it'll take, uh, take that, uh, commercial that's there by, uh, that, that's in question, uh, to residential. I noticed the biggest tract is up there. I assume that's the brown property up there in the north part of Maumell. Can, can you see the map okay?
Yes, sir. The majority of that is the brown property.
All right. And one thing I wanted to ask you about is I, I was curious about what all was out there on the, uh, uh, New Road out there to the interstate. Uh, there's some, there's some red out there, but it looks like it's right in the middle of the bayou. Is that, is that the, uh, commercial? Is it in the bayou?
So that's on the western boundary of, uh, property that borders the interstate, uh, that is zoned, uh, C2, but the majority of that is in the wetland area. So most of that is, uh, would fall under the FEMA flood zone, uh, requiring additional mitigation.
Okay. It's kind of in an odd place there. I would have expected...
Yeah, I'm not too sure why that was zoned that way at the time, but all the land to the, uh, to the east of it, uh, that is part of that parcel is actually zoned, uh, industrial I-1. I believe they, uh, when it came into the city, they had it zoned that way. So I would imagine that a lot of that will be, uh, rezoned at some time into a commercial use.
Okay, that was my next question. So currently, all that land east of that, that, uh, bayou property is industrial?
It's currently zoned that way, yes, sir.
Okay. And it's not PRD, is it?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Uh, because I'm, I'm just very interested in making sure we have, have as much, uh, available for commercial out there by that third entrance as possible. If there's any way to encourage somebody to switch it over, I'd sure be happy with that. But, uh, okay. Uh, I just wanted to mention one other thing. I generally, on this, this, uh, ordinance here, I, I generally do not vote to change zoning, uh, that would allow for high-density housing. Uh, I'll, I'll vote no on that probably, but, uh, my mind's still open on this. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Mazoney?
Yeah, actually, uh, Mr. Grummer, a question for you as well. So I, I share a lot of the same concerns of Councilman Mosley and the planning staff on here. Um, as you guys put out, our, our budget is very tight, and we don't have that much commercial property left. This is a great proposal. It's more, can we afford to, to lose more commercial, uh, property? If, for pros on this, the only thing that's, I could find in the whole write-up was that the land has been vacant for a long time. Cons, inconsistent with the Maumell Forward, which though it is dated, is the only, um, strategic plan we have. Compatibility issues with the surrounding area, potential zoning, um, residential encroachment into the industrial areas. All these are hampering, would be hampering other commercial zones and development that may, that we need to happen. So what, other than, am I missing something? Other than the property has been dormant for long, are there pros that I've not seen in the, going through the minutes?
Well, as far as pros, one of the things that is hard, is a hard thing to measure is the impacts of residential on our commercial growth. Uh, normally, when you bring more, uh, residences in, then it, it, it provides more bodies to spend, uh, in the local dollars, and it helps to promote, uh, commercial and economic development. Um, that's one of the things that, uh, we're, we're going to try to look at more in detail this year as we're going through our land use review for the city. But, um, uh, a lot of the commercial areas, opportunities that we have are on the outskirts, uh, on the Third Interchange and the, uh, the North Maumell area. Uh, there's not a lot of commercial left in our town center area, of course, but with that being said, um, like you mentioned, this area hasn't seen growth, and the C3 component doesn't necessarily work at this location. So a revisit to that is, is, I think, important. Um, although C2 is allowed by right based on an ordinance change that happened back in 2001. But, um, um, from our standpoint, from a planning perspective, the, if done, if done appropriately, it could offer additional opportunity for commercial growth. We still have a lot of PCD area, uh, over there that can be, uh, developed commercial as C1 or C2 as well.
Yeah, that's, that's a lot of ifs, because we've been following the model for the past five to 10 years of more and more residential, and our commercial hasn't gone. And we've gone from a huge budget surplus to needing to move, rightfully so, but finding expenditures into the, into the, uh, um, street fund in order to balance our bills. So that model is not proven, um, to work here. So we can't keep doing the same thing and hoping for a different response. I saw that you were looking at redoing the, uh, long-range plan. Is, is it appropriate to maybe hold this off till that goes so we can actually get a, a more critical assessment of whether we're pro, whether this is con? This just seems very reactive rather than proactive.
Well, and our job is to process the applications as they come forth. So if the property owner wants to request it, then that's what I have to do. So I, I can't really give a recommendation on that. Sorry.
Dylan, do we have any idea how much, for MEMS, as I said before, one, one ambulance costs us eighty thousand a year this year. Uh, it was only about twenty-some previous year, but because their cost is going up, they're sharing it. I don't know if that's going down. Have we looked at what the, what the, what the cut will be till we need a second ambulance? Because if it's, if we start building more senior centers, we'll be needing more MEM services, and that will potentially bring another... And that will potentially bring another, another ambulance, which will be another significant cost to the city.
And that's certainly, that's a fiscal analysis that needs to be done, which I'd need, I'd need the fire department's assistance on that, as well as the finance department to kind of look at those numbers, but we have not, we don't have that number available.
Thanks.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes, we, the, the land on the other side of the interstate, that hasn't been annexed in yet. Is that correct? We don't have a signed annexation agreement?
But at the Third Interchange?
Yes, sir.
Uh, no, sir, we do not.
Okay, so we...
That I'm aware of, at least.
We don't know what, what that might be zoned as if, if that should happen?
Unable to predict at this point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion on ordinance 1025? If not, it'll be on third reading at the next city council meeting. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read. Yes, sir? Pretty much, yeah. Come forward, please. State your name and address for the record.
Ron Harris, 6309 South Wind Drive, North Little Rock, Arkansas. In light of some comments, when it comes to this on the third reading, I am gladly to provide you some numbers from the NEHB on what this is going to produce and you will, you will be happy.
Thank you, sir. Uh, if we can, I believe we're on the second reading of ordinance 1026, amending the Maumell zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Maumell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, in ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1026, in ordinance amending the Maumell zoning map and for other purposes.
All right, this is the zoning map amendment that follows the land use map amendment that we just discussed. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. We'll move on to the second reading of ordinance 1027, enacting supplemental provisions of the city code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Maumell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, in ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1027, in ordinance adopting and enacting supplemental provisions of the city code for the city of Maumell, Arkansas, providing for the repeal of certain ordinances not including therein, providing for the manner of amending such code and providing when such code and this ordinance shall become effective.
All right, this is the, well, the title just explained it. Is there any discussion on ordinance 1027? If not, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. With that, we will move on to new business. The first item of, item of new business is ordinance 1028, amending the Maumell zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Maumell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, in ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1028, in ordinance amending the Maumell zoning map and for other purposes.
All right, so this is the rezoning for the area that would be pretty, pretty much adjacent to the area that we just discussed off of Commercial Park, but it's the stuff that, it's the property that would separate it from the I-1 category. And is the city the applicant here, Mr. Grummer? Okay. And I could state the reason why, but if you would like to come up and explain why we are asking for the rezoning of that? Please?
Yes, sir.
I can't read your mind or your lips.
Sounded like you wanted to, you wanted to, you're doing a much better job than I do sometimes. So the, the previous item that I was up here on, we were discussing the rezoning and land use change to PRD and SUR for the property to, just to the west of Commercial Park Drive and south of these parcels. Mr. Gene Pfeifer owns all of this area. And when the PRD passed on through, the concern was with the single-family development style that was being proposed for that area would create conflicts with the existing zoning surrounding it with C3, which is not compatible with single-family residential. So the city met with Mr. Pfeifer and after discussing the uses in the C2, he was, he was in agreement to down, downzone the C3 to a C2 to allow it a, a much lighter commercial use that would be, which actually does allow residential. And I will point out that a C2 zone does allow a R3 multifamily density development in it. So potentially apartments could be, come into that area in a C2. I just want to point that out. But we saw it from the standpoint of downzoning to create a buffer between the industrial use that is in the industrial park to the east from the PRD and what they're proposing for single-family residential. So the uses within that C2 could create that buffer zone between the two. That's the reason why we brought it forward. And we, lastly, I, Mr., we informed Mr. Pfeifer that if the rezoning to PRD does not happen, he does have the ability to have us pull this from the agenda if he does not want it to go through.
I would like to really quickly add one thing. I think it's not only possible that you see residential. It, it may be as much, it may be more accurate to say probable than possible. I don't know that for a fact. I'm not the property owner. As far as I know, there's no applicant looking to put high-density housing there, but it's, it would, it's, it's a, it's probably probable. So which brings up the question then, then, you know, if you don't do that, how are you, and you go forward with the other rezoning, how are you providing a buffer or a transition from the PRD to what is ultimately industrial on the other side? Which isn't this, this current property, but the, the industrial to the east of this there. So I just wanted to be very transparent, at least with what I think we will be looking at if that happens. With that, Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yes, because of that, my concern early about the incrementalization of we start chipping away more and more. So for this one request, now we're chipping away into others and now more residential could probably come in. It, this seems very reactive. I've not heard one thing. Is, is this the best thing for our long-term city? That's, that is the question that has to be answered. We can't unring the bell. If we start putting residential, we can't make more commercial from what we have. So if we keep adding more residential, our support infrastructure will continue to grow and our expenses will continue to outpace our revenue. And these are decisions that will we be feeling on this scale probably five to 10 years from now. So th, this isn't something that we can take lightly.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Councilmember Mosley.
Yes, I'd, I'd like to just kind of expand on what you just said. When we did Maumell Forward back in 2011 or whenever it was, I, I was not on the committee, but I attended every single meeting and I read the report, of course. And one of the findings I want to share with some of the newer aldermen, I'm not sure you're aware, but one of the findings was that anytime you add another residential roof to Maumell, it does not quite, the revenue obtained from that does not quite cover the cost of, of, of serving that residential. So we are greatly encouraged to try to, try to get a lot of commercial property and, and not necessarily emphasize residential. That's, that's how I took it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion on ordinance 1028? Seeing none, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. We'll move on to the first reading ordinance 1029, amending multiple sections of the Maumell city code. Madam City Clerk, Treasurer, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the city council of the city of Maumell, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, in ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1029, in ordinance amending multiple sections of the Maumell city code to define short-term rental, require business registration, and an accessory use permit for short-term rental properties and for other purposes.
Thank you. This was an ordinance sponsored by Councilmember Tierney or, and Councilmember Shin. Perfect. Councilmember Tierney, if you'd like to let us know what's going on here?
Sure, yeah. As many of you probably already know, you know, renting the short-term rentals in houses in residential areas is kind of exploding business across the country and it's not regulated, there's no really oversight for it. So the point of this is to, you know, create a, a registry of the short-term hotel businesses operating within residential areas and establish a contact person to assist the police and fire departments in the event of emergencies. Currently, this shadow business and we have no way to identify them, you know, where they're at, where they're operating. And they are subject to sales tax like any other service. Creating this, this registry will enable the city to deal with the concerns of residents living next to these businesses and issue of that venues will not occur at residential areas.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion on this ordinance? Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes, I, I wanted to ask, I'm assuming you all did some research. What, what is cities like Little Rock, North Little Rock, Sherwood? What, what are they doing on this sort of thing? Are they enacting similar things or they, is it a Wild West or what's it look?
They already have them because they want the A and P tax off of them. I actually oversaw a Victorian just down from the River Market for two years as, as Little Rock was developing their taxation plan and such as that for this. It is one of the fastest-growing areas in the hospitality industry. And right now, it may only affect 10 homes here, but in the next five years, it may be 50 or it may be 100. It's all in why people come. We have the ball tournaments. There's one down the block from me, actually. You know, we have ball tournaments every weekend through the summer. I expect that house will be occupied. There are companies that actually rent that house every other week for their supervisory staff to come in and check on a job they're working on here in, in Maumell. So it's here. It's just a matter of us tracking it. And I also tell you from my experience, you don't want overnight guests authorizing the gas company to come in and shut off the gas for a gas leak when it's actually the building next door. So you need a contact point that's other than the tenant.
Okay.
And it actually is rate, as far as like Airbnb, not just anybody can rent with Airbnb. If they've ever, if they ever get a negative report from a, a host, they can't rent with them anymore.
Okay.
You don't have that option at the Holiday Inn Express. If they're blacklisted at one hotel, they still go stay at another one. And that's not the case with a lot of these firms. Once they get a bad ref, they can't stay with them anymore.
Okay, so you would say by, by adopting these, these things here, this ordinance, we would be back, we would be on par with other cities like Little Rock and we wouldn't be charging any more sales tax or than they do?
It's just collecting what we're, what's due. We're not adding anything to it. It's strictly a matter of tracking.
Now, these people, have they been remitting sales tax or they've been avoiding it somehow?
Well, we, we wouldn't really actually know that because they don't pay sales tax to us.
It's collected by the, the firm or sign it.
And then paid to the state and we, even though we get reporting, it doesn't, it doesn't let us know.
It doesn't detail out, okay.
Correct.
Okay. All right. First reading, I, I didn't see anything wrong with this, assuming we weren't being more stringent than other cities. So, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions for the city attorney. It appears that this is covering more than just short-term rentals. The first section that I want to ask about was Section 1A. And as I understand it, this is just the business registry section in Maumell. Is that correct? This is, that's what that section is for and it further defines what a business is. And, and, you know, it goes through institutions, corporations, LLCs. I won't read the whole list there. But I think a big one there is going to be sole proprietorships. I know a lot of people that don't necessarily have a full-time job, but they're, have a part-time job. That's the way their income is generally recognized is through a sole proprietorship. So i, is this any different than what we currently require as far as for businesses to register or is it just defining it better?
I think it's, it's making it more clear cut because as it is, you know, the city clerk's office has had to just kind of interpret, you know, periodically, we've had to interpret on a case-by-case basis. So this is setting forth that, you know, you know, in a more clear manner. I, I looked to a proposed ordinance that a task force out of Fayetteville has been working on in regard to short-term rentals in the initial drafts of this ordinance. And these were some different things that I, you know, had some experience with. I know we, you know, we did need to interpret from time to time, so compared some other ordinances to try to clarify a few things, state some, you know, exemptions that are common in other cities for business registration.
So would this apply to people that do part-time cosmetic sales, vitamin supplements, athleisure wear through a website?
So it's my understanding that, you know, anything, and, and this is pointed out, this requirement should include any person or non-governmental entity who has or should have a sales tax permit and operates out of a physical address within the city of Maumell. And it also encompasses home, home occupations as that is defined. So I think those types of businesses should already have been registered with the city.
So they should have been registered already? Okay, so that, I think, I, I, last time we kind of looked at business registrations, I want to say I asked the city clerk about this and I may ask again later. Okay. All right, that, that's that section. Section 1D is referring to, this is all new language, in regards to landlords that own properties. As I'm reading this, if you own less than three dwelling units, you would be, for long term, you would be required to register as a business. So basically, if you own more than two, is that what I understand?
Right, yeah. And that's also pretty consistent with what other cities do in regard to long-term rental arrangements.
Okay. And we don't currently have any requirements in place for a property owner if they have five, 20 properties?
We have some unclear provisions.
Okay.
We do have some provisions under the nuisance section, I believe, where we talk about out-of-state landlords. And it's not at all clear whether that applies to just out-of-state landlords. It's in a section that's titled for out-of-state landlords or property owners, but it's really not clear who all it should apply to. So I did want to address that some in, you know, in this process.
Okay, okay. Going to section, section 4E, and this is under short-term rentals. Of course, this is all new language in this category. It refers to occupancy. You know, says, "Short-term rentals may not permit occupancy of more than two people per bedroom plus two." Can you explain what that means?
Well, again, this was taken from the Fayetteville ordinance, but as I understand it, you know, what made sense to me is that there would be two people allowed per bedroom and then there might be like a sleeper sofa or something like that that was designed to, for a couple of additional people to be able to sleep there. But I think, you know, the, the maximum of eight, you know, made sense to me. It was what they included there as well because we don't want these to become event venues. You know, we don't want, you know, groups of 20 people coming in and being next door.
Is the maximum of eight people, is that what Fayetteville has been working on?
I believe so. And I did compare a couple of different cities, so I don't remember exactly everything, you know, what came from each one, but...
But Fayetteville has not, they've not actually put anything in place, have they?
So, no, it, it, it was tabled the last time I checked, but I haven't checked on it in the last couple of weeks.
Okay. So speaking from my experience here, Airbnb is one of the first places that young, younger people go to when you're looking to travel. For me, it is and for a lot of younger people, it generally is. It's amazing that you can rent a house for about the same as you can for a hotel room for a weekend, right? And with the family, I want to be able to spread out. And so what caught my eye on this is that the times that I have stayed in an Airbnb, it would have been illegal if it had been in Maumell. Because I have a family of five and I have traveled with other families before and we would exceed the maximum occupancy of eight people. the maximum occupancy of eight people. And the reason I'd ask the question about the number of people per bedroom, I don't know how we're going to monitor that, but a lot of the Airbnbs that I've had experience with, they design bunk rooms where kids can pile in, and so it's great. All the kids can go pile into a bunk room, the younger kids, and then you have other bedrooms that the adults can stay in. So, that was my, one of my bigger concerns is that we're capping it at eight people, and the experience that I've had, I would, that would have been illegal for me to do, but I've traveled with other individuals, so, with other families. I just, I don't, I went on the Airbnb website and was looking at what we had available in Maumell, and I know there wasn't a lot here. I know we're not really a vacation destination, but sometimes, like even for this coming weekend, I was looking for Airbnbs, and I know we have, my family, we have multiple families that wanted to stay in one place, and that would not have been allowed here because we would have exceeded the eight number. So, that was a concern of mine. I looked at Fayetteville, of course, they had 300-plus available for the particular dates that I looked at. Conway had a bunch available. Maumell did not have a lot available. And then in regards to the tax, I tried to reserve a room here in Maumell over the weekend, just to see, and I went all the way to the checkout process, and it was charging me tax based on local, state, and county tax. So it had the full nine-and-a-half percent tax there. And I spoke with a friend who leases their home out on Airbnb, and on the statement that they receive, it breaks it down and shows what the total fees were, as well as the tax that is being charged and collected, and that Airbnb remits that to the state, who then remits it back to us. So, there is a process in place for that. So, now, that's assuming Airbnb is doing what they're supposed to be doing, but anyway, I just had some concerns about that, because, you know, as that's, it is absolutely a growing segment, and it's going to continue to be growing. And, you know, governments always playing catch-up in cases like this, but I still don't know how I feel about it, because the maximum of eight people, generally, if I'm looking to rent an Airbnb, I'm going with other people, other families. So, I don't know if I want to prevent people like myself from staying in a house. So, I know that there was an individual that was concerned about Airbnbs in the city, but I just, I don't know if we have a problem with this yet. So, I'm still exploring. And I was trying to look at some other city codes as well, and I haven't started peeling back all the layers of that onion yet, to see what other cities are doing. But I appreciate your advice, councilor, or city attorney.
One more thing. I did speak to the city attorney in Sherwood, just to see kind of what they did. They don't allow these at all. I mean, it's not in their code as a residential use. And so, if they learn an Airbnb, you know, they cite them and don't permit them. And so you may see some cities that don't have anything, that don't directly address this, and they may take that approach, because, you know, there are neighbors who don't want 15 people staying, you know, next to them and having a party on the weekend in a residential neighborhood.
Sure. Well, and I also think of, you know, when somebody is, you want people to come to your city, right? I mean, you want them to come in, and if they're traveling, if they're vacationing, if they're renting, they're spending their tax dollars here. They're going to our grocery store, they're going to our restaurants. And so, you know, I don't want to pull back the welcome mat and say that people aren't welcome, but I think there is a way that we can, can work through this. I know Fayetteville has a much more robust, I've stayed up there in an Airbnb. I know they have a much more robust travel industry up there than we do, and if they've not come to any conclusions on how they want to regulate this, I mean, that says a lot to me. But I know Eureka Springs, I think, has also done some things, and anyway, I just want to keep on digging into other cities' codes and seeing what they're, what else they're doing.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner. I don't want to detract from this very serious issue or the wise comments you just made, but did you say young people like you were using a lot of the short-term leasing like this? Did I get that right? No, your mic's muted, so you can't respond.
Forty-four and below are definitely young.
Okay.
I think sixty and seventy below are young, but whatever.
Councilmember Williams?
Well, young people like myself have rented Airbnbs as well, and the maximum capacity was, it was based on square footage. So larger homes, you know, you get, you can put more than, you know, eight people in. So I think we could probably look at something like that. But I also did spend some time today looking at other cities, and it's almost always regulated. And I think Airbnb and VRBO and companies like that, I think they're the ones who have to comply with the city codes. So we can't just have like little pop-up houses here and there, and just call them Airbnbs. So you have to register with Airbnb, and Airbnb has to check out the city code, and they're the ones who have to comply. So that's my understanding of it. But, I mean, if we move forward with this, and if we want to raise the occupancy, now I can see eight people in a, you know, three-bedroom house, but if you've got, you know, a 7,000-square-foot house that is being rented out through Airbnb, you know, you can get two, four families in a house like that. And that's how, that's what we've done at the beach. We've gotten the big beach homes and put all of us in it for them.
Thank you. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, what's your take on all this?
I don't know. I don't have a problem with, I don't have a problem with short-term leasing. I don't know that we've, I haven't seen any problems that we've had. We've had a few folks complain that they thought there was short-term leasing going on, but we haven't seen any residences where short-term leasing was actually a problem. Just the, just the mere fact that they thought that there was short-term leasing going on was the complaint, and are these allowed here? Though, I think we'd much rather be prepared than encounter a problem and not be equipped to deal with that problem. So, you know, I, I don't really see anything wrong with this. It doesn't do, it didn't seem earth-shattering to me.
What do you mean, earth-shattering?
It doesn't seem to do anything extreme.
The ordinance?
The ordinance, correct.
Okay. I'm a little, yeah, I'm kind of, this Airbnb stuff's all new to me. I've never done it. I know my son, who's young like you, has done that with his family quite a bit, and they're very comfortable doing that. And they did it during the COVID. They didn't have any problems with that. They wouldn't stay in a hotel, but they do Airbnbs. So my wife and I are thinking about that, but, yeah, I would hate, I would hate to put regulations on people that, if it's not necessary or not good. And, but, you know, if that's kind of the norm, and we feel like it's necessary, then so be it. But as far as a limit on number of people, city attorney, would that be, if we changed that to some degree, would that be a material change where we'd have to go back to first reading?
I think we would want to go ahead and do an amendment, and, I mean, it's a content change, so I would probably recommend going back to first reading.
Okay. I'm not going to make a motion, but if you wanted to make a motion on that limit, or you did, I'd support that, because I can see, there's some big houses in Maumell, and I can see those being rented out on corporate or something like that, and...
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
I'd like to ask Chief Pickard, do you mind coming up? And I think we have had some problems in the past. I'd like for him to address, if you don't mind, sir. Kind, sir.
As far as the Airbnb, we have had one incident that I can account to during the COVID crisis, where there was an Airbnb in the Country Club of Arkansas, and we had several hundred people at the residence, doing burnouts and everything else, and they would make several arrests out of there. So there, if you don't limit the number, then it will get crazy. I don't know what the magic number would be.
Hey, it's not a hundred.
But you need to put something on there. They're just going to keep coming.
It sounds like one of those incidents where those folks won't be going back to...
I have one more question. Do you all know how many, how many?
People are doing the Airbnb now, can you tell?
Across platforms, it appears to be about 10.
200?
No, about 10. 10 is platforms. There's more than just Airbnb.
Okay.
There's some that are just renting rooms, and there's some that are renting the entire house.
Okay, okay.
May I address the Fayetteville issue for you? I don't know this as a fact, but what I suspect after operating hotels in college towns, they have an issue with the fact that if you're 21, you can rent. And college kids that are 21 have a tendency to bring alcohol and friends. I had that problem in hotels. We had that problem at the Victorian that we looked after. It's kind of entertaining when the cameras pick up 40 people coming through the door, and it cost them $800 by the time it was over with. So, that's probably why they're holding up, because you can't, you've got certain legal things you can't do that presents a problem for what you can do.
Thank you, Councilmember Gardner.
Yeah, I was just going to say, in response to Mr. Mosley and Ms. Williams, you know, I would certainly like that occupancy to be raised, but I'm not prepared to make a motion tonight. I just, I don't feel like I could even vote on anything tonight, because I don't know what that number would be. You know, I was thinking about my house in particular, and how many bedrooms I had, and if I wanted to rent it out, if Mr. Mazzoni wanted me to rent out my house next to him, I don't know. But, yeah, so I don't, I don't know. You know, for me personally, like I said, every time I stayed in one, it's been more than eight. So I would not have been allowed to stay in a unit if Maumell had, if they had those same rules as Maumell is looking to implement. So I'm just not comfortable at this point even proposing anything, because I think it should be, you know, I just don't know. I don't know what the number would be. Yes, you can. So I would like to see that amended, yes, but I don't know what to do.
All right. Is there any additional discussion on ordinance 1029? Councilmember Tierney?
Well, wonderful, the idea of what everybody thought about putting a capacity limit of eight people per thousand feet.
Per thousand square feet?
Per thousand square.
So a house in Osage Falls can have like 24 people?
Who would be two, well, three, and least, well, not mine.
Wow. I think you might want to speak to some constituents before you make that choice.
And look at other, other rules and other regulations in other cities, how they determine maximum capacity.
Sounds like there's a consensus that folks want to look into this and maybe come back next time.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing. Anyone else have any comments on ordinance 1029? If not, it'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting. First, second reading, maybe. Anyways, first reading of ordinance 1030, amending the Maumell City Code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaske, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled, ordinance number 1030, and ordinance amending a section of the Maumell City Code to expand the allowance for private city streets and for other purposes.
Thank you. This is a very simple, basic ordinance that allows private streets to exist even when they're not just on a cul-de-sac or a short-lube street. There still requires the determination that those streets adequately be able to be served by public service vehicles, as well as they would have to demonstrate that they cannot unreasonably limit access to adjacent parcels, hinder logical traffic patterns, or otherwise be contrary to the public interest. Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yeah, what precipitated this? What happened that all of a sudden we want to make more private streets?
Well, what we're seeing is, so the most recent issue that brought this up is the preliminary plat that's coming through, or went through the Planning Commission for that area outside of the, what is it, the northwest side of town, that's coming in off of Ridgeland. It's in the county currently. What we're seeing is that there's numerous, as we run out of residential areas in the area, that we're getting more and more interest in subdivisions going in in the county. Maumell, unlike a lot of cities surrounding us, does not have a carrot to entice folks to annex into the city. And in fact, we have a lot of road bumps that prevent that from happening. So we have a subdivision going in just outside of the city borders that would be developed to county standards, in a lot of ways, not necessarily city standards, and they want gates. What we're seeing is an increased demand for gated communities. We saw this at, with the M, at White Oak Crossing, where we came up with a way for a gate to go in, but for that area to be still public and public streets. And so that gate then becomes publicly accessible. By and large, there's, and I remember having this conversation with Councilmember Mosley and Mayor Watson years ago, and other folks have talked about it. There is, ever since the city put in the requirement that private roads had to be built to city standards, even if they were private, we saw private roads largely go away. If you had to build it to city standards, there was a desire to just go ahead and take that extra step and dedicate it to the city, so you don't have to maintain it. And that seemed to work for a number of years, where we weren't seeing private roads going in anymore, and the roads were all being built to standards, until the sort of new boom in demand for gated communities, because you, whoa, you cannot have a private street or a public street behind a gate that people cannot get into. So, it's primarily for that, for the ability to hopefully remove some of the speed bumps or barriers to folks wanting to annex into the city. So if they were able to make some of these streets private in the subdivision I'm talking about, they would likely want to annex into the city, which gives us a lot, a lot of say in how some of that gets built out to the level that we don't get when it's in the county.
So they'll have the same width, all the standards and planning, everything will be exact?
They're still, yes, they're required, whether the private or public, they're required to be built to the standards of local streets, whereas they used to be classified something else, or just thought of as not being a local street, but something else. So, this would basically just allow, and we do allow private cul-de-sacs, think of natural trail estates, where that single cul-de-sac is private, and that road is private, but that's just because it's a cul-de-sac there.
But for primary cities, not going to be changing? Different.
Pardon me?
I just want to make sure we're not, because if everything's the same, if it was more towards our city ops, I'd be a little bit more concerned about it, since now, you know, we'd have taxpayers who, the city does take care of roads and not, but this makes more sense, so thanks.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, one, the only red flag that jumped up in my mind would be whether we approve one, and they don't have a mechanism for maintaining it. And we've got a lot of that from the old, old days, where the city wasn't very good at making sure that private roads were going to be able to be maintained. Is that, does that come in here? Is that a factor? Are we going to be able to somehow or another make sure that they do have a mechanism if we approve a private road?
So the only thing changing with this ordinance is that currently, the only roads that can exist are on cul-de-sacs or short-lube streets, which is, as I understand it, a road that kind of begins and terminates on the same road. So, this specific section says that they have to provide for maintenance in the bill of assurance, but maybe the city attorney has a better answer, I don't know.
This is in Chapter 70. We also do have some provisions in our zoning chapter on review of bills of assurance at the time of final plat in certain zones for maintenance of common areas. That hasn't been something that really happened a lot in the past, but we have talked about that a lot more, because we have seen some areas where the type of mechanism that was put in place really wasn't sufficient. One thing that, you know, was brought up at one Planning Commission meeting that they wanted to do was just, you know, the developer hold title to a common space, and then it would be, you know, deeded to their heirs and assigns forever. Well, the problem is that people die and... the problem is that people die and people declare bankruptcy, and their heirs cannot be burdened with something that is worthless and is, and is a burden without their consent. So that is something we're looking at a lot more closely and trying to make sure that those bills of assurance contain, you know, Mr. Grummer is on board with this too, of course, and we've talked about it a lot. Those bills of assurance contain a mechanism that's going to, you know, be long-term. You know, it's going to be a long-term maintenance solution.
Okay. That, that's my only concern with this, I think. And if there's any way to modify this to require a certain mechanism or something, that would be, be great, because that, this does give them the ability to build a whole labyrinth of, of roads, private roads. And I'd hate to see one of those come in and then there not be a mechanism and everybody blames the city again. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any additional discussion on ordinance 1030? If not, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. Next up is Resolution 2021-8, lease agreement for the State Revenue Department. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2021-8, approving a lease agreement between the City of Mammell and the Arkansas Department of Finance and Administration Revenue Division.
This is a lease agreement that they've been, that the Revenue Office has been pushing for oh, about a year now, since they moved into the new area. What they, what they, their, their point was that primarily that the, their entity has changed due to the restructuring of state government, so they were going through all their contracts and updating the names on them. I, I kind of boycotted a little bit. I boycotted a little bit, and then they, they, they continued to ask me when we're going to update it, and so I just threw it into the council packet. I'm happy to answer any questions. Councilmember Tierney?
I think the motion that we accept the 2021-8 proposal.
I have a motion. In a second, is there any discussion? Councilmember Mosley?
You know, you and I have talked about the situation with the Revenue Office. I have looked over the contract there, and it looks like it's pretty much of a one-sided deal. I can see why they want to, they want us to sign it. They basically can get out of the agreement no matter what, anytime they want, and we're supposed to stand there renting it for $1 for the whole year. And plus, we changed the light bulbs, emptied the trash, maintained the place. So but I understand also why we, we want to try to have a Revenue Office out here. And so we have to kind of, have to be kind of nice guys. But the, the, one thing I would like us to do, and, and I don't know if I'll, don't know on this now, but I, I really think once the COVID deal is over with, we need to maybe expand the wall into our lobby from their area to give them better seating, and then give them their own separate entrance, something like that, to, to just get them. It, it's just the reception area is kind of a hubbub. I came today to get my packet. There are eight to 10 people waiting outside the door, people milling around inside. And we're also, we're also basically providing them with about a half of an employee there in our receptionist. So, you know, we're nice guys. We're giving it to them for a dollar and all that, but, you know, kind of needs to stop at some point, I think, and let them hire their own people and have their own space. Do you disagree on that?
So I'm very thankful that we have a Revenue Office conveniently located in Mammell. If I were to, when I look at the single biggest error in the remodel so far that's jumped out at me, aside from the roof that will not stop leaking, no matter what we do, would be the design layout of the Revenue Office, especially had I known that COVID would radically change how it would work, and then the size of that area relative to how it looked on paper, and how usable that is, as well as the access point. I don't know that having a separate access point would change the amount of folks coming in the door. It would just mean they came in and then went back out, or would, you know, I, I think we'd still see the same amount of people. When I reached out to the Revenue Office at your request to see if they would be willing to provide additional personnel to help manage the line, their response was, well, just leave the door open and, and if they have any questions, you know, have the receptionist, just send them to us. Would sound easy, but if, if you're trying to provide any level of customer service to the, the residents or folks that come in here, that it's just not very practical to do that, is to just kind of ignore everyone that walks in and say, that, that's their problem, not ours. And a lot of people don't distinguish or understand the difference between the Revenue Office being a state entity and the city being a city entity. So if I had my magic wand, I'd wave it, we'd put them downstairs and coming out the other side of the building into that parking lot there. But did that address your
Yeah.
questions?
I guess so, but I, I really, you know, I just, for, you know, mull that over for a year and three months or whatever this is. And see if we can't get them their own entrance and kind of get them out of, out of a, make that separation. I've, I've always had a problem with the city subsidizing groups or businesses or charter schools or libraries or whatever. You know, I hated it when we had we were allowing the charter school to use our basketball courts for free when we were charging our own residents. And so I just, that's, that's a bugaboo with me. So I'll vote for it tonight, but, but let's try to do something different. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm very open to suggestions on that. Okay, I believe we have a motion. Did I hit a second on improving 2021? Okay, I've got a first and a second. Any additional discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
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 All opposed, say no. Motion carries. We will move on to Resolution 2021-9, approving for the disposal of surplus city property. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2021-9, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
Thank you. The Police Department is seeking to dispose of two vehicles that are listed in the memo behind the, first one is a 2016 Ford Interceptor that needs a $3,000 transmission. It currently has over 100,000 miles. We don't think it would be cost-effective to spend money on those repairs. There's also a 2010 Ford Charger that has over 125,000 miles on it, as well as it has several pieces of equipment that are not working. And with that, I've got several comments. Councilmember Gardner?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2021-9.
I've got a motion in a second. Councilmember Tierney?
I was going to make the same motion.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, the only question I've got is, and I just, it just slipped my mind, actually. I can't think of what it was. I'm sorry. I'll probably think of it as soon as we vote.
That's the way it works. And just for the, to remind the council, anyone watching from the audience or at home, when we say dispose of, we, we do plan on selling these. We think that we've estimated their value at about $2,500 each. And so we will sell them through the approved process.
Oh, I know what it was.
I figured if I stole them, I'd come up with it.
Thank you very much. How are we going to replace these cars? Is this in the lease deal?
Chief?
That, just going to be one of those that rolls over and we're going to do a lease?
We've already replaced these vehicles with leased vehicles. These were actually taken out of service recently.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Any additional discussion on Resolution 2021-9? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. That concludes new business. We'll move on to Mayor's comments. Really quickly, COVID update vaccines, if you didn't know, are available for pretty much anyone. Last I checked, it was 16 years and older. If you or someone you know is trying to get vaccinated and is having trouble finding a place or needs assistance, have them call up here to my office. We'll, we'll do what we can. We can't, I don't have any special way to cut people in line, but if we can help put people in contact, send them our way. Also, excuse me, just a reminder, and I should say that I've now got both of my vaccinations, but I'm not fully protected for a couple of weeks. Just figured I'd say that. There is currently no citywide mask mandate ordinance in place. I don't plan on one, doing that, but the City Council could pass an ordinance mandating masks. We have required, I have required for the time being that masks be worn in city buildings, basically just completely consistent how it was in, with the, the mask mandate when it was in effect. And so if you're working out in the gym, you can take it off. We're basically following those protocols for the time being, because there are folks that are wanting to get vaccinated and maybe have had some, but they haven't had both doses for the two-dose treatments. And so we'll relook at that almost on a week-by-week basis, especially as we get updated numbers, as well as see what's happening with the numbers statewide. Businesses and entities are, of course, free to put in their own mask mandates, and they're free to ask someone to leave if, if that's what they so choose to do, if that person isn't complying with their own rules. And if that is the case, they can always contact the Police Department, who would treat it like a trespass, but we're not out there enforcing proactively, you know, looking at signs on a grocery store and then policing it to that level. With that, that concludes Mayor's comments. I really, actually, I actually, take a look at the FYI, there's a couple things worth noting. There's some recognition for our participation in the 2020 census. You may recall, Mammell had, I believe we finished with the second highest self-response rate in the state, so that's always positive. There's the designation of Mammell as, we finally received our designation as the Tree City for the year 2020. And then I also included some, I'm, I'm planting some seeds here for future ideas. I included an article, two articles that came out of Arkansas Money and Politics for the March edition. One was on bikeability, and then one was on the sort of the interstate version of, of bikeability. And there's some references to what Metro Plan is planning for bicycle connectivity in the region. So take a look at those if you haven't already. We will move on to Councilmember comments. Going once, going twice, sold. Madam City Attorney?
No comment.
Madam City Clerk?
No comment.
I entertain a motion to adjourn. I've got a motion due, I hear a second. Got a motion, second. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
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 We are adjourned. Thank you very much.